I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order. Please join me in my last pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have everyone here, so we do have two student representatives. Abby, welcome, you're our new representative for this year. And welcome back to Joseph. In the absence of a superintendent, the board needs to first nominate someone to act as our secretary for our meeting.
I can.
I'll go ahead and entertain a nomination now.
I can nominate Monica's secretary.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, the unanimous vote. And thank you, Monica, for acting as secretary. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I do have two here regarding our minutes. The first was a time change. Our time in was swapped for our time out last Monday. But this has been reflected and corrected in our minutes.
Sorry, I didn't know you said just in the minutes. Yes, I believe unless it's been edited that I voted when I was absent. Maybe it's been. Yes, right here under the executive session. Wednesday.
Yeah, that's definitely. Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it. Okay, so we will make that change. And then our second, our third adjustment to the minutes, we updated minutes reflect the work that Megan and her team had completed. And so that is now reflected in the updated minutes. Any other changes? Okay, see them, we'll move on.
Excuse me, could you move that a little?
I'm kind of out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of August 21st, 2024 with those three corrections.
So moved.
Seconded.
And all those in favor? The unanimous vote. Thank you very much. All right, moving into our public comment section. If there are any comments in public, we'll ask you to step up to the microphone here. And we can start with people that are in the room. Go ahead and tell us your name and then your residence. And then we'll move on to those that are on Zoom.
My name is Jerry Loza, I live on Lake Shore Drive in Winthrop. I just want to make a couple of statements. I really don't have any questions for you. Winthrop School Board dismissed the former superintendent and paid $30,000 even though he fully stayed until November 1. Now you're paying an interim superintendent until the replacement. So that cost to talk to the taxpayer about $30,000, right? So we're paying two people to do the same thing. That's one. I tutor students during the summer for free on the former teacher. Most of these kids make the honor roll, most of them two grades behind in reading and writing. However, they make the honor roll and when I look at their test scores, all their test scores say they are below level. Below level. How are they getting As and Bs and making honor roll? That's near the end of there. The board appears to be split on the performance of the former superintendent. But all the teachers and coaches, and of course I live in Winthrop, I've been here since 1987, had a very favorable towards the former superintendent. They thought his performance was very good and he was doing his job well. Two board members gave him high marks, one board member was in the middle, which I believe is you. And then this two board members that objected to the performance. One of those people happens to be a former school teacher in Winthrop. When that person's contract was not renewed, they became hostile. And that is called retaliation, which is illegal. We're only two years out from town manager resigning and head of the town council had also stepped down for conspiring for whatever personal reasons that became public. So what I'm telling you in advance is that this is not what the teachers or the people in Winthrop want. We don't want to see the superintendent go away. He was somebody good in our community. And overall, the people that you represent, the teachers and coaches feel the same way. So now we're sending somebody out, you're paying twice. I'm here to tell you that I'm very disappointed.
Thank you. Do you want to spell your last name?
L U Z O.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments?
I have a prepared statement I want to read, but before I do that, I just want to say this. And this is kind of in here, so it'll be totally redundant. The school board did not dismiss me or make me go away, at least not overtly. So, and I also want to welcome Abby, it's good to see you here. So I'm going to read my statement. And I really, while I appreciate the support that I've got from a lot of people, this, certainly after tonight, I've chosen to leave. So this really needs to focus on the issues at hand, issues for the community to consider with respect to what I have to say and what they need to do. This should not have ever been about me. I made my decision and I stand by my decision. So I'm just going to read this, it'll be much easier. And I also, this is for the record, so this should be attached to the minutes. I have resigned on my own. The school board has not made me resign. I was required to provide a 90-day notice for the school board. They have chosen to make me an offer to go sooner, which I have accepted. So this is not about me. But it's set about a public sharing of what concerns I think the community should be aware of that caused me to leave. So many people have reached out to support me and asked me if they should come speak on my behalf. I have told them what I am telling you. It was my choice to leave. However, the school board to think that I would be willing to leave immediately without having any closure with the community, the staff, administrative team, or students is hard to fathom. There were other issues that have contributed to my decision to resign, but none of them was as impactful as the dysfunction of the school board. 19 years as a superintendent being one of those things, reality. The other issues were listening to half-truths being spread throughout the community by former employees with their own personal agenda to discredit the administration. All three schools had issues that needed to be addressed last year and every other year before that. In all cases, the administrators did what has always been expected of them. They investigated, they took action, and the behaviors did not reoccur. There is no issue in sexual assault at the grade school. There are no ongoing issues with behaviors on the school buses, et cetera. Listening to people come before the board to share their story and not being able to respond is very difficult. However, I respect that and I support their ability to do that. There has been a community member, parent, who has consistently addressed an issue with the school board. Whether I agree or disagree with that community member, I completely support the process that allows that to happen. They are advocating for what they believe in, and that is their role. I think people often think that what I say in shared school board meetings or have shared at school board meetings is my own personal opinion. Sometimes that's true, and sometimes it's not. I am the representative of all of the staff and administration, which means that my personal preference or opinion does not get shared. And people may have judgments based on that, is their role. The other frustrating piece is the amount of posts on social media by people who have never had a conversation with me. I have continuously offered to make myself available to discuss issues. I have offered to meet at people's homes or anywhere other than school, but no one has taken me up on that offer. Instead, they listen to haters of people who simply do not know what they are talking about and break me, the schools, the staff, or administrators. Being in education is tough. All of this is frustrating, but not what is driving me away. I recognize that people will make up their own truth regardless of the facts. Winthrop is not unique in that. This brings me to my biggest concern. The school board has consistently not followed their rules and responsibilities, their roles and responsibilities. School board members are elected people, are elected by the people to conduct the business of the schools and they may not prescribe by law. School board has three primary responsibilities by statute. Hire the superintendent of schools, your only employee. Make policies. Develop a school budget that is supportive of education and fiscally responsible to the community. Those are the three responsibilities. They are also the eyes and ears of the community. That means that they should be listening to the community and directing them to where they should go to address their concerns and answer their questions. They are not problem solvers. The administrators are, including the superintendent. At the last board meeting, one of the board members talked about parents who had concerns about students dropping out of the high school. Why wasn't that information shaped with the administration? No board member has a training or authority to address these concerns. They have no authority as individuals. School board should be apolitical, without vendettas, without personal agendas. They should be held accountable for their actions that they take even when acting as an individual outside of the board meeting. They are always elected officials and should be held accountable for that. They should not be able to berate administrators and tell them that they should leave their job or use profanity when they are angered, or tell administrators how to do their jobs, or sit in meetings and glare, shake their head, or roll their eyes at the audience and discuss it more. I have said repeatedly that Winthrop truly is amazing town and our schools and our staff are also amazing. They have stayed above the fray, while the school board has struggled with focusing on their jobs and some members have refused to follow expectations that they agreed to follow when they joined the board. I could go on and on. Instead, I suggest that someone or someone from the Winthrop community needs to take action to get this situation under control by removing the members of the school board who have been problematic.
Jen, could you just wrap off in the next few minutes?
I have this much to read. I'll wait till then and speak. And I hope in the future that you hold other people to the limits that they're supposed to have. This is at least two members, probably three. This would require petitions for recall of the board members. Many people have spoken to me about how to do this. I provided a number of people with a line in the process. I know that people have expressed a great deal of anger, but no one has been moved to action. The timeframe to do this is quite short. As a day prior, as a petition has been developed, signature sought, it has to be returned to town officials 45 days prior to the general election of November 15. That means it has to be returned by September 18. It's sad that it may come to this, when what should happen is that these people should just step down. Our recent survey clearly shows that they are not representing well over 75% of the community. In closing, I want to thank all the staff and administrators who have supported me over the past 40 years. I wanted to come to Winthrop and I thank the 95% of the community that have represented this town in an awesome way that Winthrop is. I thank this amazing staff and I can assure you that they will continue to stay focused on the most important work that schools do, educate students. The superintendent of schools is not the most vital role in the school system and neither is the school board. Both roles are important, but not the reason that schools exist. School board members need to understand their role or get done.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any other public comments? Whether that's in the room or on Zoom. Okay. We'll go ahead and close our public comment section and continue on with our reports, starting with the superintendent report. These are in our packet. And we have our, there are no appointments, no nominations, we have A. Korea, M. Burgess, N. Burgess, excuse me, N. Sue, A. Aliad, there are no retirements, and one transfer of J. Kennedy. And that concludes the superintendent report. Moving on to the chair report. I just wanted to share that I had attended school opening day workshop. It was a day for teachers and admin and our support staff to jumpstart the year. I shared how my own teachers impacted me and helped keep me on the path to academic success. I was disappointed that some of the times I was used to criticize the board, but we ended on a high note with Sue Fawcett and her giant game of rock, paper, scissors. I also had a chance to attend open house. Thank you to the administrators this year for staggering those times so that families with multiple kids over process schools could attend and be able to meet their teachers. The grade school open house and ice cream social was a hit. Students were able to meet their teachers and then join their friends out of the playground for ice cream. And so that was really nice. Then we had Winthrop Parentage Day. I saw a lot of families from our community enjoying yummy food and music, playing cornhole, kids crafts, and then we had the Historical Society there as well, which was nice. And the weather held off, so that was good. My next bit is about board dynamics. We continue to reflect and assess how we're communicating with one another and with the schools and the community. We're looking forward to setting some board goals this year to help us improve and become more effective as a team. I think one of these changes may come in how we structure our meetings. I'll be adding an agenda item for our next meeting so that we can discuss some ideas as a board that we may have. We've identified that what we've been doing isn't working and we're cognizant about that and we're hoping to move in a positive direction to find that sweet spot for us. So that concludes my chair report. We'll go ahead and move into our committee report, starting with finance.
Did not meet.
And pausey.
We did not meet, but we are meeting on Friday.
Thank you. And negotiations?
We did not.
And there are no administrator reports this week. Moving into old business. 5.1, entertain a motion to approve the curriculum guide for policy IGA.
So moved. Seconded.
And let's have a discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, Megan. I had a chance to relook at it. A lot of good work. So I wanted to thank you for all that work. I saw the start of the report cards and that's really good. And so you can thank the team that worked on that for me. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I agree, I've taken a couple of looks through it and I think it's going to be a great change and I think hopefully it will bring our kids in a great direction for their academics.
Thank you. Yes, and I was also able to take a look. The information on there is vast. Writing all those for every grade, for each grade and each class, a whole comprehensive list of the items that each student will need to learn. I could easily spend hours looking through that and so I know that your team spent a lot of time and we just really appreciate the time that you took to put that together. I know that would be a great help to everyone. Yeah, Monica?
I wanted to say, yes, I went back and looked at the tape. Initially, I was concerned because I saw the main learning results in the common core, which as we know, all teachers make reference to when they're building out our year. And so what I didn't hear, and I heard when I went back, was how.
Point of order. Catherine just wants to make a point of order.
I was wondering, are we working on talking, remember, the discussion is our discussion about this topic rather than talking to people in the room? That's my point of order. How do you?
Yep, I think we're kind of each talking to them, kind of giving their praise and Monica was doing the same. Okay. So if there's a discussion component, then we should keep it here as a discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I am thinking and I'm saying that I had more clarity on that and I'm excited that that's going to be a part of the report cards so that the parents will know. I've always hoped that, you know, the parents would know what it is we're teaching and then they could reinforce that at home. So there were a number of different things that I missed that I was really happy.
And as the board discussion was, anything else that we wanted to speak about? Okay. Perfect. Then we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor? That is your unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to section 5.2, bus discussion. Is Josh Wheeler here today? I'll see, you have, is he on Zoom by any chance?
I was kind of feeling so, from a discussion standpoint, looking, I was hoping to get a copy of the contract. I wasn't able to do that. I know.
Please speak into the mic, thank you.
Regarding, sorry, regarding the contract, I know that there was an application through a portal online that did not give us a contract to read something in paper, and I know that there has been, there had been attempts to track that down. And so I didn't, without Josh's input, I don't really know if we made a decision.
Yeah, I think we just need to table this without him here. It's just.
Yep, I agree. So we'll go ahead and table that discussion until our next meeting. We'll add that to our next meeting. Miss Tim? Starting with, going into our new business section, 6.1. Oh, let's see. Discussion about selling property on Ramblere Road. This was tabled from our last meeting, I think 21/24. And I guess really the clarity here is are we willing to entertain the idea of selling property?
Yeah. That's why I'm here.
Oh, okay. So.
Actually, actually, with that, abandoned houses, I own the property next to it.
Are you David?
Yeah, I'm David.
Okay, did you want to speak to that? Yes, you, step right up.
I started, so. The reason I'm asking about it, I've asked for a while now.
Do you mind if I just stop for a second? Do you mind saying your full name?
Callabiglarada.
Thank you.
And I have the property right, actually, I have it at Ramblere Road. And that house, I've seen for years, I see kids go in there and it's abandoned and it's fallen in. Somebody's either going to get hurt in there or somebody should flatten it down or something because I see kids in there all the time and the house right there next to it. And I've asked if I could buy it. I just want the part from the hill up around it. Basically, it's my property bigger and, and as far as that house, I would flatten it. Because like I said, I see kids walking down the high school and I see them go in there all the time. And that's just the liability for the school in the town. So either somebody's going to buy and fix it or flatten it.
Thank you very much, David, I appreciate you speaking. Thank you very much for speaking, I appreciate it.
So I just, I don't know, if you guys have what you have to do or can I buy it or can you, so how do I find this stuff out? I'm doing this, I don't really do this, I usually.
No worries. So what we'll do, we'll discuss as a board and then we can take an action on that, I believe, in the next meeting.
Okay, so how will I find out about the action?
Can we contact you? Can we be in touch?
Sure.
So you can stay tuned if you want to listen to our discussion, but the action item won't come until next week, next meeting?
Yeah.
When we make the decision?
Yeah. I just have no, I never worry. I'm probably going to ask you, I never know where I'm going to be. So can I give you my phone number?
Please, I was just going to ask you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wondered if we have a copy of a proposal specifying what the parcel is and, you know.
I know it's five acres, but I really don't, where the high school sign is, that's the driveway that's up to that house. And that bottom, I just want from where the house is, like an acre and a half up there, just add to my land.
So for us as a board, we're not really talking specifics, that would be, that's not really our job, but what we would do is figure out if we are willing to entertain the idea of selling the property, not just talk specifics. That would be something like Homestead Realty or something would do.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, either that or flatten the house because some kids are going to get hurt in there. But I'd be, I have kids over there playing in the house and the high school kids. And it's like.
Thank you very much.
And it's a liability.
So how's the board feeling about?
Do we own our house?
That is on the property that the school owns?
Yeah, it is. My property here is a stone wall and that's on that part, it's on the right side of my property.
So how are we feeling as a board? Is that something that we're willing to entertain, an offer to sell that parcel of land?
I have a question, I've had my hand up for a while now. Hello?
Who's my partner?
Is there someone with their hand up online?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Peters. I'm a former town councillor for the town of Winthrop, Maine for over three years. I am now currently employed by the school system in Winthrop. My question is, under what charter authority do you guys have to sell the property? Any property that is part of the school board is also, the school board manages the property, but any property that is under the school system is actually, I believe, owned by the town of Winthrop.
Yeah.
So I want to know under which authority you have to make these decisions because it's not just a matter of saying, oh, we can just carve off this piece of property and sell it. There's a whole process you have to go through and then it has to be put out to public bid.
Yes, so we, this is something that I spoke to Anthony Wilson over the phone about. It was wanting to see where the board fell on whether we would be able to, whether we would entertain the idea. And so, and then of course that would, that's not under our role as far as making that decision.
Well, basically, I was told that I had to go here first and then.
Okay, correct, I saw that clarification.
No problem, thank you very much.
It wasn't just, just here, here, then the town, then.
Yep, it's just several steps.
Yeah, steps.
Yes, Abby?
David brought the concern about the building on the property. I think that's something that we should definitely look into, secure and keep safe so that children don't get hurt.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's a liability. That's on the school, that's on the rule.
Thank you.
I would be willing to entertain that idea to, but not to move to the next step.
I think there's a kid over there.
So we'll go ahead and add that to the agenda for next time so we can take action on that item. Thank you for your input. Okay, moving on, I dropped our new business to section 6.2.
Thank you.
Thank you. A discussion regarding the superintendent's search timeline. And that was basically just wanting to share for transparency that we do, so we have a plan that when we start looking for a full-time superintendent, that we will, we talked about having committees, search committees or whatnot, that we would, those who have shown interest and probably those also who have not shown interest in being a part of that community, allowing them, bringing them on board and being included in that decision, making, you know, that's been a concern and a question brought up to me. And so that's certainly something the board has agreed upon. And then as far as the timeline, putting an ad in the paper about January or February for our full-time superintendent position. And then the whole interview process will be about a three-month process that we will that will, it'll take to complete that. And then hopefully we'll have our new full-time superintendent hired on July 1st. And Jim did his input on the dates for that.
I have a question. I think I heard of timeline. Is there, is this the time to talk about a process? And how we want to move forward with it? Because I wasn't sure about to be agree on a process of how we're going to do search committees, who can be on the search committee, who are we going to speak to? How is that?
Yeah, we haven't talked about all the details yet. This is more of just a general overview, what we had discussed and whatnot. But the search committees, I think we should definitely have more discussions regarding what those might look like, who those might be made up of, et cetera.
Okay, because I just want to be clear. I wasn't aware of a degree upon process or any of that moving forward. I think I had heard about a goal for a hiring of July 1st. And I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't agreed upon something that I wasn't aware of. Because I was not aware of the process discussion, which I guess, oh, well, I think we should have a conversation and I wasn't sure. So this is our discussion? Are we discussing this or are we discussing it in another time?
Yeah, so, and this certainly was something that, you know, we had talked to Steve Bailey about. I think that you had some missing from that meeting anyway. Yeah, so I think it would be good to keep this going, this discussion going. I wasn't prepared to talk about specific committees. I didn't gather the materials to kind of look at what those might be made up of. So I think in another discussion, I'm going to keep my hand down the room, but just thinking of how prepared I was for bringing that forward as a discussion topic. We didn't actually totally.
Oh, it makes sense to me. I was just, so I guess really we're talking about the discussion of the timeline. So that the process, maybe we're not ready for that. We're just talking about the timeline. And so those are the two points, which I do believe that we are on the same page. And we'll bring up a follow-up conversation with, about the process and how that looks and what we think would be best for Winthrop schools in order to make our way through this.
That's correct.
I believe during our last meeting, when we were listening to Steve Bailey, he talked about, and we talked briefly about one of our next purposes being drafting, updating the job description. That was an understanding of where we were going next.
Thank you. Any other input? And that, I mean, there's just the... Yes, Eddie?
Yeah, Catherine kind of just teetered around a little bit. She said about putting together some meetings so that we can add this and start the process of the meetings and all that stuff.
Yes, and I think this would be a good workshop discussion when we talk about that. Okay. Moving on to the next item of new business. And who to approve the appointment of Becky Foley for FY 2024 to 2025 as an interim superintendent? So...
Second hit.
Okay, and my discussion, or our discussion, I did want to show you a bit here. I am pleased to nominate Dr. Becky Foley as our interim superintendent for the school year for 2024 and 2025. Dr. Foley comes to us with 34 years of experience in education. The beginning of her career began right here in Winthrop. Student teaching in third grade with Alice Flag, Alice Flag. From 2016 to 2022, she served as the superintendent in RSU 5. Previous to that, she served as an assistant superintendent in Portland and in RSU 52. That's Turner, Green, and Lewis. She also served 14 years as principal for and turned in North Yarmouth. She lived in Windsor for two years before buying a home nearby in Wayne where she currently resides. I do believe that Dr. Foley is an outstanding educational leader. Personally believes it takes a village for all of the students to reach their potential. We are excited to have her join our team in helping us to realize this vision. And so, all those in favor? And that's an extension because Tim wasn't able to make the interview process. Thank you very much. All right, we'll close our new business section and open it up to item seven, public comments. Oh, I did not ask you if you would like to say something. My apologies.
It will be brief, but I did want to just introduce myself and just to say how excited and honored I am to be your next superintendent. And I'll be getting work tomorrow and meeting staff and students. And I'm also meeting with Jim and he's going to help to ensure that we have a smooth transition. So I'm just really looking forward to moving the district forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Apologize for overlooking.
No, not a problem.
Now we'll proceed to our public comment section. Seeing done, we'll move it into our suggestion, suggested additions to future agendas by board members.
I have a suggestion. I'm sure many of you saw the recent news coverage of the latest school shooting in Georgia that occurred today. I would really like to know what we have in place for those kids who may fall between the cracks. I would like to hear that from our principals. What we currently have in place, what I'd really like to do is learn what we have in place and if, you know, if that is adequate.
As a board, we can certainly discuss that for sure. I know that there are parameters in place. I'm not sure how much can be shared with us because I know there's certainly safety measures and things that we can't know about. Just with their protection, that can't be made public.
I just mean, you know, what, who has eyes on the kids that may fall through the cracks? I know that the high school principal, Jay, mentioned the RTI committee. I'm not sure if it serves that purpose or not. And so I would just really like to hear back.
Sure. I hear your concern. Could you just, did you want to speak back?
So now again, so I think this is an opportunity to talk about how we would talk about something and then direct our superintendent or ask our superintendent to do that. But remember, our role, that's our employee. So we want to make sure to be respectful of that and respectful of their leadership in the district so that it's not asking principals to do anything. That is not what we do. What we would talk about is if the board as a group decides that we feel, we want to have a conversation about ensuring the safety of vulnerable students, children, students, then that is something that we share with our one employee to say, hey, one employee, we trust you and we know that you are going to do great work. And could you, you know, look into this, see what works for this community? And then they would report back to us. So we need to be really mindful and respectful of the great work that our principals do and the RTI program that we have in place, and I'm sure lots of other support systems. I think that's as a conversation here. So I think that's one of the things that hopefully we work for moving forward is that we are really mindful of our role in this.
Point of clarity. I don't have a plan, but I want to, you know, stand behind in terms of doing that. What I'm asking for is information so that I can understand better what we do to address kids at risk.
Well, to have a conversation and discussion, that is what I was trying to say. That is in our lane. We don't go and say we have, we are directing principals to speak to us. We don't. That is not our role. Well, that's my opinion. I believe that we speak superintendent and have this discussion and share your concern. And then we rely on the superintendent to do their job. And so when I hear you say that, maybe I'm mishearing what you're saying, or maybe you're saying something that's different. But what I'm hearing you say, and what has happened and caused tension, is that we are making requests of the principals. We are making requests of teachers. We are making requests of other administrators. And that is undermining the leadership and the effectiveness of them doing their jobs. So I hope, did you just, I don't know if I'm miscommunicating, but...
I have no way intend to undermine that. I'm simply asking for information and I think it's important. And I wanted to bring that up in the public forum of the meeting. I'm sure that there are a lot of parents, you know, who worry when they send their kids to school. We see horrible things on the news. So we make policy as a board, you know, what will our policy be regarding that? Before we can develop a policy, we need information about what's currently occurring. But I certainly don't intend to get out of my lane.
We do have policies in place too for all the students. But we do, I am hearing that you are concerned and that you would acknowledge that too. Did I just hear that? Eddie?
Yeah, I just want to share. I know because some of us are very new on the board. We haven't had a lot of training or a lot of guidance provided. There's been a lot of some mixed stuff. So I think some board training, I think hearing what Monica said, is asking for. I think we can request to have some great board trainings, start learning some more. Now we have a new interim. I think it'd be great that you establish that relationship between all of us. And maybe taking a little bit of time and try to understand so that we can maybe figure out together the best way that we can get that information through the interim. So I, what I heard from Monica, she had a concern she shared. And now, now it's the chair to decide, you know, if we would like to discuss this to bring to the new interim superintendent.
Thank you. I think certainly it's worthy of discussion. And I think this, you know, once again, a good workshop topic. So I'm really eager to get those into place so that we can not just do the business meetings, but also, you know, the work that we need to do as a board on a workshop level too. Any other suggestions for future agendas?
I think discussion on that building at the bottom of the hill. I think that's something that we might want to look into taking for immediate measure steps where it's a life safety issue on our school property.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving into our school board comments.
Yeah, I've got two. One, just wanted to, just try to start recognizing our great staff here. And Joseph, you can talk more about your trip in detail. But Edvanta Assel is an example of taking the entire weekend, his free time, with a bunch of kids camping. Across-country team. So that's again, going above and beyond his normal job title. Number two, I want to thank Jim for his service, three and a half years. I was proud of working with him and wishing him luck.
Thank you very much. Joseph?
Yeah, I can speak to a little bit of that. Yeah, I really would like to recognize our staff, especially Edvanta. They're very fantastic. I worked with them cross-country with camping trips and also we personally approached to hook up the north team for the rest of it, which was very exciting. I'm slightly less cheering, but taking a little bit from the first two public comments we heard. I was a little shocked, I would say, when I looked in the newspaper and saw that the superintendent on the school board that I'm on was, accepted an offer to be... Now, I don't think we should necessarily be a part of this process of decision-making. But I hear this word transparency over and over again. I've heard it so many times, I'm telling you, at this board. And I have a hard time believing, like transparency, when teachers, students, student representatives are finding out news about their superintendent from the newspaper, right? They're not finding it out from a school board member. We're not seeing it on the website. We're not like, we're seeing it on the newspaper. And I just, I can't really, but I don't mind that. Maybe I'm missing something, but I don't know. I really enjoyed working with them, so I was a little bit shocked.
I have a couple of public comments. I did attend all the schools' open houses, but I did attend the grade school. They did do an amazing job. The ice cream social was a huge hit, though ice cream did come before dinner in our house that night. It was quite awesome to have a backwards day. The teachers were so welcoming and so friendly. It was an awesome experience. A lot of the parents were making a lot of amazing comments. I also want to point out the athletic field. I want to say that there's a lot of hard work and it's amazing to watch all different types of sports and activities going on down at the field. The incredible booster and that whole group of, you know, fundraising and all that. They're sort of dedicated with getting everything cleaned out. All the volunteers in our community donating all kinds of amazing stuff for that. The hard work. I know Valerie Pomelo, who's the new cheerleader, has a lot on her plate to get the new team up and running. She's been doing an amazing job, trying to juggle all of that. The uniforms are amazing. I can't wait for everyone to see those. But I just want to thank, like, pretty much overall, general of all our teachers, administrators. I also want to thank Jim as well for all the successes that we've had in our communities, the hard work. I think I would love to hear, I think Tim brought up a great ideas. I think we need to hear more about the amazing things our teachers, students and stuff do. We don't often hear much at our school board meetings. And I think that would be great for us to start hearing those feedbacks and the amazing highlights of our schools.
Thank you, Eddie. Any other board comments?
Yes, I would like to take a moment to speak about our board and our commitment to moving forward. And in respect of that also to really, I would like to say that I really appreciated working with Jim and thankful for the work that he's done with the board and with the schools and his leadership role. I think, I believe and I hope that we all have a commitment to work together differently. And Ms. Foley, Superintendent Foley, can hopefully help us to effectively do our job and support Winthrop schools. And I think Joseph mentioned the idea of transparency. And I think that can be a really key word that we can work use. I feel like this information barriers causes lots of miscommunication, misinformation. And it is also a sign of respect. And I'm very troubled and I hope we reach out to the administration, to the teachers, and take an active role in supporting them. We're here now and what we can do to make repairs. But most importantly, we need to work together as a board and be effective and do the required work of our job description.
Thank you, Catherine. Seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and... Seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and wrap up our meeting. I will call this meeting for the school board to close at 6:50.